It is seven thirty six P M and I am calling to order the Ballpark City Council regular virtual meeting. And at this point, we have an. No, Dr. Pastor Flores.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. Also wanted to share, as I pray, I don't know if you've all heard that my father passed away about ten days ago. Long time pastor here in Baldwin Park for nearly sixty years, longtime resident as well too. And I just want to thank all of you who have joined us in prayer for my mom and our family and our church as well too. And invite you to come, we'll be, we'll be lying in state, having them lying state on Monday morning, March fifteenth from ten o'clock to one o'clock on the church campus. Let me pray. I'll say, mis ojos a los montes de donde vendrá mi socorro. Mi socorro viene de Jehová que hizo los cielos y la tierra. No dará tu pie al resbaladero, ni se dormirá el que te guardar. He aquí no se adomecerá ni dormirá el que guardar a Israel. Jehová es tu guardador, Jehová es tu sombra a tu mano derecha. El sol no te fatigará de día ni la luna de noche. Jehová deguardará de todo mal, él guardará tu alma. Jehová guardará tu salida y tu entrada desde ahora y para siempre. Family Father, I thank you for the city of Baldwin Park. I thank you for our friends and family who are in leadership today, who continue, Lord, to lead with integrity. Lead God from their heart, but with their mind as well. Lord, I'm grateful for the privilege you've given us to be part of this community. And we pray, Lord, for all the families, Lord, that hurt, that mourn, that grieve in this season. Many of our families, our citizens, Lord, have suffered, Lord, through this pandemic. And yet, God, we continue to see Baldwin Park strong. Thank you, Father, Lord, for the healing power that comes from your hand, the compassion that flows from your arm. Thank you, Father, for the love that we see in this city that continues to heal one another. I thank you for our mayor. I thank you, Lord, for his just, his call in his life to lead in this season. Thank you, Lord, for our council. Thank you for our police. Lord, thank for all those who serve as essential workers. Lord, to the leadership of this great city. We commit this meeting to you as we seek your wisdom in moving the mission of this city forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Flores, for that. And of course, my sincere. Just lost the word, I'm so sorry. Condolences to you and your family, and of course, the Church of Redeemer, who are a big, big part of our community.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, and I believe at this point, we have the pledge of allegiance, and I always like to pick somebody. I see we have a former councilman Cruz Baca. Would you like to do us the honor of leading us in the flag salute?
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you very much. Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for, for, for leading us in the flag salute. City clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have council member Danny Damian.
Here.
Monica Garcia.
Yeah.
Council member Paul Hernandez.
President.
Mayor Protem Alejandro Avila.
Yeah.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here, thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. At this point, there are nothing to report from closed session as we haven't adjourned announcements. I think I, where Shannon, I think we do have to report out, I did attend the webinar for the Independent Cities Association, the winter webinar, and we learned some great things. One of the greatest things I think I took back from that was a, the tiny home program is immensely popular in cities all around the state. And I know Manuel Carrillo, he invited us to attend that webinar with Redondo Beach. And I saw during that webinar that, you know, it's, it's a very, very successful and very, uh, very approved of by, by communities everywhere. So I'm very excited that we were able to send a letter of intent to a similar program at the last city council meeting. And at this point, I can, we can move on to proclamations, commendations, and presentations, and I believe we have a presentation by Alzheimer's Los Angeles. Yeah, City Council, Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, before we go into the presentations, can we close on behalf of Dr. Adriano Flores? Actually Reverend Adriano Flores, and I just want to extend condolences to the Flores family. And thank Pastor Flores for his prayers and his strength this evening. We extend our prayers to you and to your mother and your family during this difficult time. We have so appreciated all of the contributions, the wonderful, you know, blessings that your father provided to this community through the Church of Redeemer and all the programs and services that that church has, has given to this community really. And the, and the legacy, the, you know, lasting impression that he will have in our community through the church. We will not forget, you know, just his contributions and, and we extend our condolences. So thank you again, you know, for your prayers, and we give those prayers back to you and your family in this difficult time.
Yeah. Yes, Mayor Protem.
I also want to extend my condolences on Pastor Flores to you and your family, very difficult times, I understand. So thank you for always being here with us. Again, my deep condolences.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Oh, please, Ms. Contreras, please.
Oh, well, thank you. I will also like to close in memory of Dr. Flores' dad. I will also like to close in memory of my dad. He passed away six years ago and his ninety ninth birthday. I thank God for having him in my life, and he'll always be part of me. Thank you.
Mayor.
If I may. Yes, Councilmember Hernandez. Thank you, appreciate it. I want to also close this evening's meeting on behalf of Maria G. Montes. She's a longtime resident and senior here. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family. They're going to be celebrating her, the celebration of life this Saturday, for those that are aware of her and are close to their family. You know, Dr. Flores, you know, again, there's very little that I can say during this challenging time. It's always very difficult to lose, to lose a loved one, especially a parent. But please rest assured that, you know, my family are, you know, our thoughts and our prayers are with you. And if there's anything that we can do besides, you know, lighting a candle and saying a prayer for, on, on your behalf and on your father's behalf, please don't hesitate to, to reach out to, to me or anyone else on the council. The Church of the Redeemer has been steady fast in supporting our community with the weekly food drives and so forth. So, you know, it's, your institution is, and the institution that he founded is a beacon of our community. So thank you for everything that you've done, and more importantly, everything, and your father has established and created a legacy in our, in our city.
There, I have one more person, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I want to close in memory of my cousin Debbie Ortiz. She passed away a week ago. She was only fifty seven years old. I want to send the condolences to my entire family and also to urge you, to urge everybody of this COVID. It's extremely dangerous, even after you have been, well, she had been well, she got sick in December. She was already back at work, leading her normal life, but apparently COVID is sneaky like that. It stays with you and you don't even know it. And so I'm just asking everybody to please follow the mask rules, stay home as much as possible because it doesn't matter, it doesn't discriminate. It just takes anybody, even when we think we're out of the water, and apparently we're not. So I'm closing in memory of my cousin Debbie Ortiz. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. And I, and I want to, yeah, who was that? There's so many people on the screen. I can't see who it is. Yes, City Clerk Garcia.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my condolences to Mayor Protem, the loss of your cousin. Yes, COVID has lingering effects that we still are not sure what they are, and sadly, we're seeing these cases continue, so my deepest sympathy to you. I also wanted to express my condolences to Pastor Flores and his family. Little did we know that when he was at our meeting the last time and providing us with the invocation, that was, I understand, the day that his father passed away. So that he was here praying with us, speaks volumes of the type of man and soul his father was. I had the pleasure of knowing his father for many years, always found it so inspiring and welcoming to attend their church services. And he was just a beautiful man, a beautiful soul, always with a smile, always inspiring people, encouraging people. He truly was, I would say, a man of God, and so I was deeply, deeply saddened to hear about his passing. So Pastor Flores, sorry for, for your, your loss, and I know that we're all with you. Thank you.
Thank you for that, City Clerk. And of course, you know, our condolences go to everybody that's, that's lost someone. You know, and it's never easy. I, I, my sister's birthday is coming up, and I lost her a little over a year ago to the violence in Mexico. So I understand all of you. At this point, we can move on to Alzheimer's Los Angeles presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Ethan Moreno. I'm the Senior Manager for Community Education and Outreach for Alzheimer's Los Angeles. And I want to thank the mayor for his help in getting me on the agenda tonight to, to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease, the services that Alzheimer's LA provides, as well as empowering caregivers through education, and to bring this message to the residents of Baldwin Park. So you may ask yourself, why, what is the need? You know, Alzheimer's disease is an age-related disease, and one in nine people at the age of sixty five or over have Alzheimer's. And right now, oh, if you can go back, that's fine. Well, anyways, right, right now, every day, there's ten thousand people reaching the age of sixty five, and this is going to happen until the year twenty thirty. So it's a growing problem. And not only that, Alzheimer's disease affects the Latino and the African American communities at a higher rate than the white communities. So Alzheimer's disease affects a person's memory, judgment, and abilities to do simple daily tasks. Thus, Alzheimer's not only impacts the person, but the whole family as well. And unfortunately, as of now, there is no cure or no proven way to prevent it. But the good news is Alzheimer's Los Angeles is here to help you. Next, please. So Alzheimer's is celebrating its fortieth year. We're a locally-based community health organization nonprofit. Our mission is to improve the lives of families affected by Alzheimer's and related dementias by increasing awareness, delivering effective programs and services, providing compassionate support, and advocating for quality care and a cure. And for the past two years, we were fortunate that Alzheimer's LA made over forty six thousand contacts, the people living with the disease, the family caregivers and professionals through our programs and services. Next. So we provide, all of our services are one hundred percent no cost. The only exception is professional training, that is for doctors and other care, healthcare organizations. The services we provide are our helpline, which is a multilingual helpline. We have care counseling, where we have professional care counselors that will virtually meet with the family and provide, come up with a care plan, provide resources and information. Right now, we have over thirty two support groups that meet virtually for caregivers to, you know, give each other emotional support. We also have our early-stage programs, and that's, these are programs for people who are in the early or moderate stage, along with their caregivers, and they participate in these groups such as Art For Alls or Memory Mornings. And we have ones that's called baseballs, and it's, it's a program that talks about baseball. And this is a, a remembrance of therapy. And this program, Baseballs, was written up by the LA Times sportswriter Bill Plasky in twenty nineteen. And it was, and how good of a program it was. We also have Medical Alert Found California, and we also work with the county with the LA Found Service. This is helpful for people who have Alzheimer's and wander off. It helps them, you know, be found quickly. And lastly, we do community outreach and caregiver education, in where we give multiple classes in different languages. Next. So I'm here specifically to announce that we're having a, a program, a three-week program that's specifically for Latino caregivers, and it's called Cuidando con Respeto, Caregiving with Respect. It's a three-week program, and it starts on Tuesday, March thirtieth at five thirty P M. So it meets once a day, one day a week for two hours for three consecutive weeks. And Cuidando con Respeto is derived from the Savvy Caregiver Program, which is an evidence-based program or evidence-based training, so it's been proven to be effective through research. This training is designed to have significant reductions in caregiving distress and notable improvements in caregiving skills and knowledge. Next. So this is the flyer that we created that we're, you know, passing around, you know, through the internet and through our listeners. And we're, you know, I'm happy that the city of Baldwin Park is also a sponsor of this. And so if you want to register for this, you can call our, this number, three, two, three, the, the number on the flyer, three, two, three, eight, five, nine, eighty-eight, ten. Or you can email at A M O R A N, A Moran, at A L Z L A dot org. Or you can just call our helpline number. Next. So the, the other class that I want to make an announcement for the people are Creando un hogar más seguro para personas con Alzheimer. Alzheimer, it's making the home safe for people with Alzheimer's. So this class is going to be on Thursday, March eighteenth at four P M, and all these classes and trainings right now are virtual. So this is a one-hour presentation. Caregivers or the general public learn methods to modify your home, use technology to increase safety at home, and you will learn a behavior management, management strategy. Because that's one of the main goals as a caregiver for someone with Alzheimer's is managing behavior. Next. So we know that especially in low-income Latino households, not everyone has the computer or the internet. But fortunately, the library for Baldwin Park is a county library, and they do have laptops and internet hotspots that they can loan out. You can search around, if they don't have any there, you can search to the other local libraries that are close by, like Norwood, Suncast, or go over to West Covina or Almonte. So those could help. If a family doesn't have it, they can try their LA County Library, just as long as they have an active library card. Next, please. So these are some of our other classes that we have. For the general public, the classes cover the basics of Alzheimer's, the brain health, behaviors of Alzheimer's disease, and how to compassionately and effectively communicate with someone, and of course, making your home safe. The other, the other trainings that we offer for, specifically for caregivers, is the six-week course. It's a Savvy Caregiver, and then we have the Savvy Caregiver Express, which is a three-week course. And of course, we have the Cuidando con Respeto. We are rolling out a new training soon in Spanish, Unidos en cuidado, but we are not in, we're finalizing that, that training. Next. So my big ask for you is tonight, the big ask for you tonight is to, you know, share this information with a family member, a friend, a neighbor, who, or a coworker, who's a caregiver. Because they're, they're probably really busy right now, and they, they can't attend this meeting. But by one degree of separation, you can give, help us reach that caregiver. So I'm really thankful for the, the time that the city's provided to me and to, you know, share this information. Alzheimer's LA dot org is our website. Our helpline number is eight, four, 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 three, five, seven, two, five, nine. And, you know, that's, that would be the best way to reach us and our, the gateway to all our services. You can also go to our website to find the schedule of all our classes that we offer. Okay, and that's it. Any questions?
Mayor.
Is that Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say, Mr. Moreno, thank you very much for that presentation, and it's, it's definitely very helpful. I've known many people with Alzheimer's and/or people that are taking care of them that have actually passed also. So it's very important information. Manny Carrillo, we can put this on our website so people can seek help because a lot of times they're lost. I just recently, not that recently, two years ago, my neighbor passed of that. And the daughter was a caregiver, and she was lost sometimes, didn't know what to do or how to go about getting help. So thank you for that information, and it is very important, and we need to make sure that our community members are aware that the help is out there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, of course, and I, I want to thank Efrain. I know that this has been something that he's been dedicated to for a very long time. So I'm excited that we can partner with Los Angeles Alzheimer and, and help our community with resources that they might need. I know that a lot of the times, our community, because of, you know, because of where we are in demographics and the economic ladder, you know, caregiving does fall on a lot of family members, and they need support and they need help. And, and I think this is one way to, to help them out in a, in, you know, in a, in a way. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know if any other council members have any comments or questions? If not, I do believe Manny will, will, will share out this flyer on the, on the social media, right? And we'll get it out there as much as we can and let as many residents know about the, the opportunity to join this event.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night. Have a good meeting.
Great, thank you. And I believe at this point, we are moving to recognize the twenty twenty Kindness Angel recipient, Betty Nixon. And I believe, I'm going to take a guess, and I, I, I'm going to take a guess and assume that Councilmember Damian took initiative on this one.
You were right, Mayor. Yeah, so basically, this is for the Kindness Angel twenty twenty one that the Baldwin Park Women's Club recognizes every year. And I'm going to go ahead and, do you have Cruz the recognition that will send out to Betty Nixon?
And then, I don't know if you're a workhouse member, but you will have to let Chief Deputy Luda, I can't even speak. Chief Deputy Lulu, call the recipient before you can speak to her, okay?
Got it.
Are you ready for me to call? I'm sorry.
Yes, Lulu, can you call her?
Hello?
Hi, is this Betty Nixon?
Yes.
Hi, Betty, I'm calling, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the city of Baldwin Park, the regular meeting. We are going to recognize you for being the twenty twenty Kindness Angel recipient.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
So I believe you're the, the twenty twenty Kindness Angel recipient. And I have, I have Cruz Baca here, and we have Councilmember Damian, so I'm going to hand it over to them so they can better explain.
Yes.
Hi, Mrs. Nixon. My name is, hi, good evening. My name is Danny Damian. You are being recognized by the city of Baldwin Park for the Kindness Angel twenty twenty one. And I'm going to go ahead and read the recognition that you should have received yesterday. It says, "In recognition of being named Baldwin Park Women's Club Kindness Angel twenty twenty one, the city council congratulates you for your devotion to families and organizations, and most of all, for your kind and generous heart. Thank you for your hard work, dedication, and for being one of the most active members for the women's club in our community. Presented this third day of March twenty twenty one. Congratulations, Mrs. Nixon." I'm going to go ahead and hand this over to the women, the Women's Club President Cruz Baca. Cruz?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members, and the city of Baldwin Park for recognizing this incredible lady. I don't think there's enough time in one evening to be able to express everything that she and her husband Clint Nixon have contributed to our community. For those of you who don't know the background of the Nixons, Betty is too shy sometimes to tell you everything that they've done. But since I've been here in Baldwin Park a lifetime, I've known them for a long time. So, but Betty herself has been such a mentor and such a leader within the women's club, not only helping us in the kitchen to have our annual fundraiser, scholarship fundraiser, where we raise a lot of money and give out ten one thousand dollar scholarships and six five hundred dollar scholarships to the students from Sierra Vista, Palm Park High School, and even North Park High School. So they, she works in the kitchen. I'm sure a lot of you have been to our fundraiser, and I, you've, or you've ordered takeout of that famous Salisbury steak. Well, that's, that's Betty's recipe. And so I just want to thank Betty. There aren't enough words, like I said, to thank her for all the mentoring and all the kindness, the friendship through the years and how active she still is, even though she's partially blind now. And so, but she's still, with a magnifying glass, addresses cards and calls people and makes sure that everybody's okay, especially during this pandemic. So a little bit, a little bit more background of the, of the Nixons is that they were co-owners of Cold's Market, and Cold's Market was just south of City Hall, that little market that's on the corner of, I believe that's Bogart or Downing and Pacific. That little market right across from City Hall. I forget what it's called, the Pilon or something, I think it's called now. Anyway, that was Cold's Market years ago. And Betty Nixon and her family co-owned that, that little local supermarket. Clint Nixon, her husband, was on the school board for many years, the Baumford Unified School District. And he, along with Margaret Solonison and Betty herself, were very instrumental in building the, the Performing Arts Center. Those are just a few of the many, many things that this family has done and to the city of, or the city of Baldwin Park and our community. And I, from the bottom of my heart, I thank the Nixons, Betty especially, for her kindness and her years of friendship. So thank you very much, Betty. You've been a real mentor and especially a friend. So thank you.
Thank you, Cruz.
Great, and thank you, thank you for joining us today.
We also have Danica Mendoza from the Senator Susan Rubio's office, as well as Veronica Lopez for Assemblymember Blanca Rubio's office.
Oh, okay.
Like to recognize Betty Nixon.
Of course, go ahead. You, Councilmember Damian, you can control this portion.
I'm sorry, Danica, go ahead, take it away, Danica.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Damian, and thank you to Mayor Estrada, the entire council, and also President Cruz Baca for inviting us to be here with you all today. I know the senator was really looking forward to recognizing Betty Nixon in person. She had joined on earlier, but unfortunately, she had another commitment to make. But from the bottom of Senator Rubio's heart, we'd just like to congratulate Betty Nixon. The senator is really proud to call Ms. Nixon a. The Senator is really proud to call Ms. Nixon a dear friend, as well as Betty's late husband, Mr. Nixon. You know, they have known each other for many, many years, both as members of the Women's Club, proud members of the Women's Club. And especially during these times that can be rather isolating with COVID-19, it's very important that we recognize others sharing kindness because that's, that's extremely important in connecting us as a community. So on behalf of Senator Rubio and the California State Senate, we'd like to recognize Ms. Betty Nixon as the recipient of the 2020 Kindness Angel Award. We applaud your continuous passion, your willingness to help others and your dedication to your community, Ms. Nixon. We hope that you have received our certificate. But please know that you are extremely loved by Senator Rubio and that we very much appreciate all the kindness that you give to the entire community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I did get the certificate, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Danica. And now we have Veronica Lopez from Assemblymember Blanca's office.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Estrada, Vice Mayor Avila, Councilmembers Damian, Persia, and Hernandez, and the community that's listening tonight. This is Veronica Lopez here on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio. It is an honor to recognize Betty Nixon, not just for her 2020 recipient of the Kindness Angel, but also for all that she has done throughout the years for the community. Her generosity and her volunteerism at the Baldwin Park Women's Club has benefited many. Many of our youth with scholarships to go to college or trade school, but also for all the young and hard individuals that are part of the Baldwin Park Women's Club. Again, her generosity has touched many in the community. So it is on behalf, and I know that we presented also a certificate to Ms. Nixon prior to, prior to tonight. But so on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio and the California State Legislature, we want to say congratulations on being the recipient of the Kindness Angels. But also thank you so much for all that you have done. We do appreciate you and I echo the sentiments that everyone has shared and what stories. I grew up on Holly Street, which is by the, the Baldwin Park Unified High School District. And Cruz, yes, I was sent many times by my mom to Cold's Market to buy some meat for the family. So I'm very familiar with that area. Great stories. And I used to love to drive by Main Avenue and see the house full of the little birdhouses in front of your house. So Ms. Betty Nixon, congratulations on this recognition. And we thank you again. Thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Got the certificate from Assemblywoman also, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thank all of you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you and thank you for, for joining us on, on the call. I, you know, I, I always enjoy when we recognize Baldwin Park residents, especially when they have such a long history here. I like Ms. Veronica Lopez, when I first moved to Baldwin Park, they would, I used to live on Virginia Avenue, so I would walk there to that same market. So it's nice, you know, it's, it's nice to know how interconnected we all are. You know, regardless of age and anything, we all live in the same city and, and it's really exciting. You know, I think I'm glad Councilmember Damian is, is, likes to give out certificates. You know, because he brings on people and we learn about them and we learn, you know, how much, how, you know, what an impact we can have on our city. And so, you know, it's very exciting to have you here. I'm glad to hear that you have the energy to keep helping everybody and stay involved. And that's honestly inspiring. So I have my respects to you.
Well, I'm getting a little bit older and do all that stuff now. I've been, I've been in this house for 58 years. And I, this November, I'll be a member of the Women's Club 50 years. So I still try to do my part, but I slowed down a little bit.
Yeah, as long as you, as long as you keep going, that's what counts, right? So thank you for being here. Thank you for being part of the city and thank you for staying involved. You are definitely setting for all of us, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you. And at this point, thank you, Councilmember Damian, for that. City Clerk, do we have public communications?
Yes, Mayor, we have a total of five speakers. It'll be Catherine Lozier from our local library, John Rios, Beatriz Sandoval, Ralph Galván, Director of the Valley County Water District, and Valerie Munoz, Mayor Protem of the City of La Puente, but also the Chair to the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. So I'm going to defer to our Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you, City Clerk. The first caller is Catherine Lozier. Let me try her now.
Hello.
Hi, is this Catherine Lozier?
Yes.
Hi Catherine, it's Mayor Estrada from Baldwin Park. I believe you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, please.
Great, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. So again, good evening, Honorable Mayor, the present council members, me partners, fellow community members. I'd like to quickly give a shout out to Mr. Moreno. Thank you so much for mentioning our laptop and hotspot programs for the LA County Library. Please, please, please give us a call if you ever want a laptop. If we don't have one here at Baldwin Park Library, we will help to track them down at any of our other library locations. So thank you again, Mr. Moreno. And then tonight, I just wanted to share a couple of programs that we have upcoming. One is our, the next session of the LA County Library's Work Ready Virtual Programming Series. It's a program called Get Going with LinkedIn. This is the workshop that will take place on Tuesday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. And it will show you how to create a dynamic profile in LinkedIn that will help catch the eye of job recruiters and other like-minded individuals to help you with professional networking. And for history lovers, back by popular demand, we have our Take a Tour Through Early Victorian Era LA that will take place on Thursday, March 11th at 5:00 PM. And this program will teach about local history as seen through images from the Homestead Museum collection. And then the third program is a program called COVID Must Know for Immigrants. It's vaccination, testing, and safety with the LA County Office of Immigration Affairs. This information, information session will take place on Thursday, March 18th at 6:00 PM. And then in addition to this program, the LA County Library does offer quite a bit of information on citizenship and immigration, including digital resources, books, and also available to our side block service is citizenship kit in a bag, which includes handouts, educational materials, as well as the official citizenship forms that you can keep and use. So for anybody who's interested in more information on any of the library resources, programs, or service, please visit LACountyLibrary.org or give us a call at the Baldwin Park Library at 626-962-6947. Thank you all and have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you for that information. City Clerk, who is next?
Mayor, the next caller is Mayor Protem, City of La Puente, Valerie Munoz, which she's also Board Chair to the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority.
Hello.
Hi, is this Mayor Protem Valerie?
Yes, I could barely hear you. I apologize.
Oh, no worries. So this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the City of Baldwin Park regarding your public communication.
Oh, yes. Good, good evening, Mayor. How are you? Thank you for calling me back. Is, is right now the time where I can address the council or?
Yes, of course. You can, you can start talking whenever you're ready.
Okay, yes. Well, first of all, thank you so much, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mayor Protem Valerie Munoz from the City of La Puente. But more importantly, I am your representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. And I represent cities with non-pumping rights, non-pumping rights. I've been elected back in 2017 and 2019. And one of my main goals was to ensure that I always provided a disupdate to local cities regarding the water cleanup efforts in the San Gabriel Valley. Eighty percent of our water comes from our current aquifers here in the San Gabriel Valley. And our goal at the agency is to ensure that we keep contaminants as well as to ensure quality drinking water for our constituents in our city. I just wanted to reach out and just to remind all of council that tomorrow, Thursday, March 4th, we will be hosting a special update for city officials. It starts at 12:00 PM. It's an online webinar, lasts approximately 30 minutes. So we will be discussing benefits of your March to the San Gabriel Basin cleanup, updates on the San Gabriel Valley groundwater contamination, and also top six week funding. I know our city staff has sent out updates as well as a link to register for any council members or even city officials, city managers who would like to attend to receive this brief update. So you can register up until the day of the event. Hopefully yourself or any fellow colleagues and council members would be interested in attending. I look forward to representing you at the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality. And also if there's any questions, feel free to reach out at any time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, Council, I'm sorry. City Clerk, who is next?
Mr. John Rios, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Rios. This is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the City of Baldwin Park. You have three minutes to make your public communication.
Okay. What I think is the code enforcers and barbecue works. I, you see, get in contact with them when I see something wrong or I see something dirty or whatever. They've been doing a beautiful job. They respond to the community, who especially where I go around and see they call me, whatever. But one of the complaints that the community is having right now is the electrical bills that they say that they never got notices in English, Spanish, and Thai. They are requested since October or next last year for them to send out those notices in three languages and they never did. Another thing is on on the public works. Like I said, they're doing a beautiful job. They got together with the code enforcers. They cleaned up a lot of those by the city yard. And they did a beautiful job. The other thing is that the community wants to find out when are they going to start doing the sweeping of the street so they can get notified ahead of time. Don't wait until the last minute or put it in mail or whatever. Because I was talking to some people and they asked me, like, so well, most of the time they'll let you know at least a month ahead of time. But they say, well, we don't read emails or we don't send nothing like that or anything else. So that's one of the things is you could notify the community. When are they going to start doing it again? So they can be aware of to put their cars in the driveway. But most of the time right now, there's too many cars. Because there's a lot of people not working and everything, kids are not going to school. So that's one of the biggest complaints. And I told them, you know, I'll let them know what your request is, you know. So I talked to the Chief of Police and he was supposed to get with Caltrans and see if they can go along the freeway in Barnes. He's, you know, let us, let us know if they're going around that area. And I explained to the chief what was happening.
Right.
You know, you know, I talked to him, okay?
All right, thank you. Your time is up, Mr. Rios, but thank you. Yeah, and I believe on the, on the issue of parking enforcement, there is a, with the street cleaner, I believe the city has been making efforts to let everybody know. Is that correct? I'm not sure who I can ask on this point, but I believe I saw flyers on cars recently and they had the Baldwin Park Police logo and it.
Mr. Mayor, we did, there was information that was put out that there was good, for the month of March, would be warnings and then beginning April 1st, then we start with citations again. So it did go out and I know that I had, it was, it went out on, on social media as well as the, the marquee. So I think it's the information, we should put it out again.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we want, we don't want anybody to think that we're just kind of going to get ready to ticket them, right? And I know that, I think that that's been the plan for a while, that we're going to, we're going to give them a warning for a full month and then move on to citations, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then again, somebody is out, I'm not sure what department is out there, but I think it's the Baldwin Park Police Department that's out there putting the flyers on the cars.
Correct.
Great. Okay, thank you for that. And of course, it just takes a little bit of time. There's a lot of houses and only, only so many of us. City Clerk, who is next?
Our next caller is Ms. Beatriz Sandoval.
Hi, Beatrice, it's Mayor Estrada from City of Baldwin Park. I believe you wanted to make a comment.
Yes, Mayor Estrada, hi. Thank you for calling me. I want to say hi to all council members and congratulate me and Betty Nelson for this award. But also I call in to you because I'm really concerned and, and need to be honest, very frustrated too. Do the chat and the YouTube is turned off? I think so for some of them, council members are bullying or are bullying our phenomenal speech and also that is the person, Amanda, in our constitution. So please turn on the chat and the YouTube because that allow more residents participate in the meetings. So please do something about this before someone comes to one demanding in other ways. But also I want to say thank you to the city workers. I talked to this morning, we, Ms. Lourdes and Mr. Ron and other people from the city. Questioning them and some things in the agenda and also in the, in the web, in the website, the city website. So I think so we need to do better in the website of the city. The information need to be more accurate and on time. And stay there for the, the most time we need to be, need to be there. So in that way, we can be more informed and be, and more knowledgeable that things are happening in our community. Thank you. I know it's, it's hard to see the hard work that you are doing and, and this time on the COVID and the all electronic and digital meetings. We know that all of you are working hard. So for more transparency, we need more transparency and we need our liberties come back to our residents. Uh, so for more transparency, we need more transparency and we need to have liberties come back to our residents. Um, thank you so much.
Great, thank you for that comment, Beatrice. And um, I know that certain people uh, certain, certain residents have reached out regarding, you know, they want to know more and, and they want to be able to get more information from the city. And of course, we want to facilitate that. And I did, uh, you know, we have Parks and Rec Director here who takes care of the BP now and and I know that I've expressed to him, you know, how we can make that a little bit easier. Um, you know, we've talked about how we can get more information out there. We want to be sure that there's good communication between the city and our residents. And I believe uh Manny and his team are getting ready to uh make a um a video portion to the ballpark now. Is that correct, Manny?
Yes, sir, Mister Mayor, we have a new element to the ball and park now, which is called Ball and Park Live. And we'll be kicking off uh our first video. Uh. I believe on Monday, we conducted the filming just a few days ago. And we are in the process of editing and it is looking very, very good. We are highlighting the first project of our entry signs to the city of Baldwin Park. I believe we have three or four and uh the mayor is featured first on the video. And he is also their, the narrator. And uh we will be uh sharing Val's responsibilities with all the different coun- council members uh over the next few months. So thank you very much and I'm hoping this will be a big hit.
Great, thank you for that. And uh, thank you. Uh, city clerk, who is next?
Um, the next caller is Mister Ralph Galvan.
Hello?
Hi, is this board member, Ralph Galvin?
Yes, how are you, Mayor?
Hey, you guessed who it is. How are you doing today?
I'm good, how are you? Thank you for the time today.
Of course, you have three minutes, okay?
Yes, my name is Ralph Galvan. Uh, good evening, sorry, good evening, honorable mayor, mayor pro temp, city council staff and members of the Baldwin Park community. My name is Ralph Galvan, a Baldwin Park resident and board member on the Valley County Water District. Just wanted to share some information. I'm excited to announce that we're celebrating our ninety-fifth anniversary. Please save the date for a water awareness drive-through event set for Friday, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Times are to be determined. Can't wait to see familiar faces drive by. There's also a college scholarship opportunity from the Water Education Water Awareness Committee available for students in the, in the Valley County Water District Service Area. The Water Scholar Program provides financial support to high school seniors planning to attend a two- or four-year college in the following school year. The link is available on our website, V C W D dot org under the News Class section. In addition, our newly updated website has a variety of free printable activities to do with your kids from coloring pages to a word search. There's also water saving tips for the kids, for their home, and for your business. You may visit H T T P colon forward slash forward slash V C W D dot O R G forward slash two zero four slash education. Um, Chairwoman Valerie Munoz covered the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. Special update for city officials tomorrow. And I thank you for your time and for all that you do for a beautiful city of Baldwin Park. Have a great night.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that information, uh, board member. City clerk, is there any more uh callers?
That concludes.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, I will uh move to close public communication. And I believe at this point, we can go to the consent calendar and I just want to confirm consent calendar is items one through six, correct?
Mayor, can I say something really quick?
Yes, council, air pro temp, Avila.
It's in regards to uh sweeper day. Um, as uh as it was mentioned, there's still a lot of people staying home from work. They're not out working yet. So I'm going to ask, I know we're not supposed to block driveways when parking inside, but I, I notice that at this time, because there are so many people at home still, people are having to block their driveway so they, they can fit their cars in. So I'm asking if uh they cannot get ticketed for doing that in the meantime, because there's too many people at home and there's nowhere else to park their cars. So if code enforcement sees, parking enforcement sees that some driveways are being parked, blocked because they're trying to fit all the cars in and they cannot take it there because again, they can be at work, so they have to park somewhere. Thank you, that's all.
Great, thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. And of course, you know, we do want to keep in mind these things and um, you know, we don't want to feel like any we don't want any resident to think that, you know, we're gonna, that the city's taking advantage during a pandemic or, you know, trying to target anybody. You know, the cars are, cars are an issue, of course, and they, they always have, they, they are becoming a more constant issue because of, you know, more and more uh families living together. So something to keep in mind as we move forward and we kind of work through March and April. And so, you know, hopefully we can just kind of keep that in mind. Um, so at this point, great, thank you, chief. At this point, uh, we are going to content, consent calendar, and I believe it was items one through six, correct? So is there any items, anybody's looking to pull?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item eight, please.
Okay. And I believe, so I, I think that's an, it's an item on its own outside of the consent calendar.
You're right, sorry.
Yeah, so it should be okay. We'll talk about it. I will, I do want to bring item number three. Um, I don't know if there's any other items anybody wants to uh pull. If not, I do want to make the motion, uh, we can pass consent calendars number one through six, except three. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, any objections?
No.
None. And so item three, I think it's pretty important uh for everybody to understand. I know that sometimes when you kind of go through the agenda, you know, it's a little bit difficult to read. So I just maybe if we can get city attorney to just kind of clarify what item number three means.
Sorry, Miss Mayor, I was on mute. Thank you.
No worries.
Okay, so item number three on our regular agenda. Ratify and adopt a resolution to amend the executive unclassified benefits matrix. Um. Uh, this is something, uh, as I understand it, that uh human resources put together. And I think it relates to, you know, um, what people can cash out, what people can do, you know, how, how the benefits matrix is going to be going forward.
Of course, and then this primarily affects council members, right, and their, and their take-home pay.
It primarily does affect council members and their take-home pay, Mister Mayor. Um, uh, it, it does deal a little bit with, you know, other, other areas, but in specific and in particular, yes, this was a, a design towards um making sure the um unclassified benefits matrix lines up with all of our city codes, regulations, state laws, so on and so forth.
Great, and I know that some callers did call, you know, talking about transparency and as we move forward and we change the structures within City Hall, I think it's important that, uh, you know, our residents understand that the city council is moving swiftly to change certain things, right? And so item number three limits the take-home pay for council members. And I think it's a, it's important that we not only passed it, but that we let residents know. You know, I know that a lot of times residents are out there and, and they like to infer certain things about council members or that we make, you know, that we are out here, you know, living lavishly, which is entirely not true. And uh, at this point, item number three does limit a lot of these things, uh, you know, as I said, primarily limits uh benefits for the council. So with that being said, uh, I make a motion to pass item number three.
Good.
Thank you. Any objections? No, so item number three passes, and I believe at this moment, we are going to the public hearing.
No, uh, Mayor?
Uh, yes.
I, I, I don't oppose, I don't oppose the motion or I'm not objecting, but I did want to add something just for full transparency. Uh, I know that our city attorney has provided an entire memo and um, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding um going forward that the, uh, there's a, a certain amount that has been diverted to other uh funds. So even though we're not taking home the, the amount, you know, we are still receiving the amount in um, in the form of retirement benefits. And so just in full transparency, since, you know, we are discussing this item, um, we don't want to give any misimpression um on that. So any, any reduction that I guess has been, you know, implied in this is, in, in fact, it's being diverted to a retirement fund. Um, and it's consistent with policies that other cities have adopted. And, you know, we want to be in compliance with uh the state as well. So just wanted to share that in full transparency. Thank you.
Of course, and you are.
Mayor, if I may?
Uh, uh, sure, I don't know who wants to go first. I was gonna kind of add something to that, but.
Go, go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so of course you are correct. Uh, and to be more specific, this means that the city does, city council members do receive health benefits. They receive, they receive a uh, a certain amount that they can spend on health benefits that in the past was being cashed out. And so when council members cash out money, it, it is no longer a health benefit. It is an increase to your income. Under state law, council members can only earn so much money. And so this is a uh, this is a move to make sure that we are in compliance with not just our, our neighboring cities, but in compliance with state law. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it is questionable on a, on a, on a state level, you know, on the basis of legality. So of course, we want to be transparent and avoid any of that. And with that being said, council did act, council did act very swiftly and I'm very proud of that. Uh, Councilmember Damon, I believe you wanted to say something.
Yeah, and, and just so that we're, we're on the topic of transparency, I want to make it even more transparent that it has been over a year that the city attorney recommended to prior council to stop the cash out of this cafeteria. And when we came into office and it was told that we're walking a gray line here, we decided, no. If this is, you know, borderline illegal, whether we're sure or not, we shouldn't be doing it. And so that's the reason why we acted to adopt this. But just for the record, prior council was cashing out for a full year, knowing that it was not right to be done. So just so that we can disclose full transparency.
Uh, Mayor Pro Temp, did you want to say anything?
Yes, well, you actually touched on what I was going to say about uh the benefits and going by state law. Also, if we can go maybe a little further, when we have changes on uh any legal documents or that things, laws that we're adopting, if we can have it highlighted and mentioned on the agenda, for example, on item three, the items that were changed or adopting so that the public knows exactly what we're talking about, because this is very vague. And Miss Garcia clarified it and Mr. Davis clarified it as well. But if we could just read it out in the future, the changes, so they can see what we're talking about is not so vague. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. And of course, so I believe this item passes. We are done on that topic. I believe the public hearing is next. Uh, city clerk, is there anybody in the public hearing that's willing to speak?
No.
Great, so there is, uh, so item number seven, I don't know if it might be Ben, who might be able to give us kind of an overview on this and just, uh, maybe just have some discussion.
I might. Ben or city planner Ron Garcia would be here. I think, Ron, did you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank Shannon. Um, I do have a short presentation, um, and I can go through it uh quickly with, with the council. Can go to the next slide, David, please. Thank you. Uh, before you, as a request for consideration of a recommendation of approval for, uh, from the Planning Commission to the City Council to approve Development Agreement twenty-one oh one between the council, uh, the city of Baldwin Park and Six Beyond Inc. Uh, to grant a cannabis permit for non-extraction edible cannabis products located at fifty eighteen Lante Street within the industrial zone. Next slide, please. The subject property consists of a fifty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three square foot lot and is developed with the thirty thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine square foot building. The building is currently operating as a commercial bakery. Um. Within the site, the proposal is to use nine thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square foot facility to manufacture edible cannabis products uh by non-extraction methods. Next slide, please. The application has been reviewed by the planning division and meets all the current development standards set forth in the cannabis ordinance. Uh, specifically distance uh greater than six hundred feet from a school, childcare facility, or youth center. And it is a distance of greater than twenty-five feet from a dwelling unit within a residential zone as required under the cannabis ordinance. All required security features will be incorporated into the, the tenant improvement. There will be no outside signage allowed. There will be no public visitation as this business will not be open to the public. Uh, last thing, there will be no cannabis odor emitting from the facility as all ingredients containing cannabis will be delivered to the facility prepared uh for mixing. Next slide. In conclusion, staff recommends that the council adopt ordinance fourteen fifty-eight, approving Development Agreement twenty-one oh one to permit the non-extraction of commercial manufacturing for adult cannabis food edibles uh within the existing commercial baking facility. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present for any further questions. Thank you.
Um, you know, I was gonna ask you, Ron, but maybe we can just talk to the applicant, so uh, he can just answer our questions. Oh, it's Robert Gray, correct?
Correct, I'm on.
Correct.
So just kind of, you want to just kind of give us a background about yourself. If I'm not mistaken, you've, you've been uh in the bread and the, the bread making industry, correct?
Correct. I came out of the restaurant business and bought the, my existing bakery in two thousand and five. I've been baking for the specialty markets of the United States uh since then and was forced under um a imminent domain uh threat in the city of Glendale to uh lose my buildings that I relocated to Baldwin Park. Ever since then, the city's been very helpful in getting me up and running uh the both of our employee bases from the Baldwin Park area. And we've had good success in um growing our business in our new facility. So we specialize in uh scratch baked non-G M O goods. And we saw an opportunity to expand our marketplace and when, when we found out that the city of Baldwin Park was a cannabis friendly community, it was about the same time that my dad was diagnosed with cancer. So thankfully he is, he uh recovered from that. But we saw the opportunity to cater what we do very well, which is manufacture high-quality food. And then we could microdose it and focus on the health and wellness side of the cannabis industry. So we're looking for support to make sure that we can convert our existing facility over to the cannabis base and continue our operations.
Great. Um, I don't know if council members have any questions. I do want to just, uh, you know, I know that some, one of our, one of the biggest efforts for this council is to make sure that, you know, the cannabis industry gets a, a better name around here, you know, uh, in the city and make sure that it's transparent and safe process and that we're all, you know, comfortable with it. You know, I've known, I've spoken to chief about it and make sure that, you know, the police is comfortable with the process that we're taking, that they're getting involved. Um, so um, did you, maybe, can you, can you, can you kind of just touch on security and what it, what it involves in, in your agreement?
So we have to abide by the state of California regulations as far as security. But if you see from the pictures that were in the agreement, our site is already secure. So we jumped ahead and looked at the, all the regulations as far as site security that are required by the state of California. And prior to the application with the city of Baldwin Park, we had already installed all the cameras that are necessary. And as far as the site security, we are already compliant. We are going to add additional security um as we grow the operation and as uh is recommended by the police department and the city. Um, and we can add live guards, we can do double um secure entries, but our site is already secure inside now.
Great. And so I don't know if any other uh council members have any questions?
Yes, Mister Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Robert, thank you very much um for, you know, going through this process with the city. Um, I know you've presented uh to us back in uh, I believe, August or so, and I think uh Mayor, our Mayor Pro Temp may have actually visited uh your facility along with their previous, previous mayor um quite some time. I haven't made it out there, but uh, you know, once we're done with all this COVID, um, I do hope, uh, you know, we approve this and uh you've, you know, continued to flourish and have a very successful uh business endeavor in, in, in this cannabis sector. So that's all I have to say for today.
Thank you very much. We've always welcomed everybody from the city um through the facility. We've hosted meetings out there with everybody from the police department to all the city officials. And we welcome you anytime to the facility to check out what we do because it really is a fascinating process.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Pro Temp.
Yes, I wanted to say I, I did have the pleasure of meeting you, sir, and uh I did uh go to your facility. It's a beautiful, clean facility. Um, I like the way you, you run your business following a lot of guidelines. Uh, so I do recommend that the rest of the council go and visit the facility uh because he's worked really hard to. Uh, because he's worked really hard to, to keep this business, and he's been in business for many years, so he, he knows how to run a business uh, by the book. So I appreciate him doing that, and thank you for having me. It's been a little bit over a year now, but thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Great. And I'm a big fan of tours, so maybe I'll be out there soon. Um, uh, maybe just before, I don't know if we can, um, it should be okay. I didn't want to just discuss, uh, with Ben or, or Ron are here, with the, what a process like this is, and if it brings in revenue for the city.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Can you repeat that one more time, Mayor?
Uh, can you just maybe talk, the, I, I think the, the agreement is on there, right, on, in the staff report, and maybe what the revenue stream is for the city?
Yes, thank you for noting that. Yes, the annual mitigation fee, the development agreement is in place, uh, for fifteen years. And the annual mitigation fee, um, is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually.
And that's a year, right?
Correct.
Great. So I thought that was just important to note, so, uh, you know, everybody viewing and all of us are aware of, uh, the revenue that's going to come in from approving this and, uh, you know, we've talked to Robert and he knows what he's doing, he's a businessman, he's got the experience. So I'm comfortable with this. Uh, I don't know if any other council members have any questions. If not, I'd make the most. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, just to add to, to the, to the figure that, uh, Mr. Garcia just mentioned, uh, this is a practice, you know, that we've been advocating, uh, that it be standardized. Um, so, you know, what Mr. Gray, uh, is paying for his license is the same that, you know, the next uh, applicant, uh, will be paying and the previous applicants have been paying since, you know, two thousand nineteen. So that's something that, uh, you know, when we talk about equity and fairness, uh, and full transparency, uh, that is the standard and that's the practice, uh, that the city council has established for the last two years. And I suspect we'll continue to move forward, uh, in that, in that manner. So, thank you.
Yeah. And, Robert, I, I don't want to push on it, but I, I, I want, I kind of want you to talk about your, your banana bread before we approve this.
That, that is a, quite, quite a popular item, but we were fortunate to, uh, have one of our best clients. Um, and they, they don't like me to advertise who I, who I bake for, but I think you know who they are. But, uh, that, that very popular item, um, it enables us to, uh, fully staff our facility and, and we do, and it's, it's a one-pound um, vegan banana bread that we make, um, upwards of five thousand loaves a day of.
Oh, wow. Okay, gotcha. Okay, just thought you should touch on it. I think that's, uh, you know, that's, that's how we all know who you are.
It is delicious.
Okay, so, uh, I'm looking forward to this. I think this is a, uh, a good opportunity for the city and of course for Mr. Gray. So with that being said, motion to pass item number seven.
Second.
Any objections? None. An item passes, and I believe at this point we are at the reports of officers, and that's item number eight.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, of course, thank you. And I believe, uh, Mayor Proten wanted to touch on this, on this subject.
Yes, I wanted to bring this item back. Um, and the reason for that, uh, first I noticed there's not enough applicants. And, um, I think, uh, our, our deputy city clerk, um, had this conversation with me, and I agree, uh, that we need to be more descriptive on the, and clarify the requirements of the job duties. And maybe once we have that ironed out, once we post it, we'll have more people interested in applying. And, uh, we need a full list of applicants, so we can just put everybody on at one time. So we can just hold off on it and have all that work done by Deputy City Clerk. And when she gets it all done, we can, uh, repost it with the, with the full clarification of what the requirements are to be a commissioner. So I'd like to be sure to bring that back, please.
And Mayor Proten, before we continue, I do want to just go back and backtrack a little bit and close, uh, the public communication for the public hearing.
All right.
Close that, so, closed, and now we are back to you.
Okay, so my motion is to bring this back, item eight back, please.
Great, and I believe, Shannon?
Before we, before we vote on the motion, if I can just make a, a recommendation for, um, I don't know if this will be, uh, Lulu City Clerk or who would can get to do this. I've noticed that the Housing and the Personnel Commissions have been vacant for many years. And, for example, right now, we have, uh, the Planning Commission, that's always been, uh, full. We have one vacancy. The rest term out, uh, in June. We had three applicants for that, and then for the Recreation and Community Services, we have one vacancy. But the Housing and Personnel, we have, you know, no applicants. We have two for the Housing. So my recommendation would be, if we can do some sort of, um, online Zoom workshop, kind of like the way Manny does with the community, uh, with Parks and Recreation, when they're taking community input, uh, regarding the, uh, you know, the trails and the expansion of the parks. So that we can pretty much educate our residents as to what is, what is the, the position of each commission, you know, the planning, the Recreation and Community Services. What is their, what is their job description? What is it they're supposed to do? And then also, explain to them how to go to the website or maybe apply, so that we can get more of our community involved and we have more people applying. And so that this way, when we bring this back, either in May or June, we have a, a big pool, uh, pool of, um, applicants, and we can, you know, kind of fill in these vacancies and these, uh, other commissions.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember. That's a great idea. We could take that, um, and turn it into also, uh, an educational video. Um, that way it could be replayed, um, on different medias, social media, and our website. So that's something we can pursue.
Right, yeah.
And then, so, can you just kind of reiterate your motion, uh, Mayor Proten?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, can you reiterate your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to bring item eight back, please.
And, and so, one more time before we vote on it. Are we, when, when do you want to bring this back? Are we, Shannon, are, are all the terms up soon?
So even though a term is up, um, that person can continue to serve until they're replaced. Um, so, you know, we typically would try to get the vacancies filled, um, and then worry about if we're going to, um, depending on the numbers of applications, if you want to, um, replace people whose terms are up.
Yeah, so when do these terms expire?
June.
Then thirty.
So, so my, my goal is, um, I know, uh, Lulu needs to, uh, upgrade all the information on the commissions, so I know it'll take time, maybe a week, week and a half for her to get that up there. When she has it up there, she, we can post that the positions are open and people can start looking up. And Mr. Damon, like, like he said, the idea of having a video, a, a Zoom class, letting people know what the commissions are about and what the work will be. Um, so people can apply, so they can know what they're, they're working on, what would they be doing once they're, they are in the commission. So I'm thinking, here we are, March, have, um, the application process open until mid-April. And then we can take it from there, depending how many applicants we have, because they're due up in June. We can, we don't have to wait till the end of June to, to get all the commissions up and, and running.
Yeah, and I, and I do want to make sure that we take advantage, sorry, Councilmember Damon, uh, I do want to make sure that we take advantage of the time and, and really push the commissions out there. You know, the commissions are a, a really, really good opportunity for residents of all ages, I believe, as long as they're over eighteen, to get involved. And I think that would, that would be interesting, you know, we can create more diverse commissions that are more representative of demographics in Baldwin Park. Um, and, you know, I think we can make this a really good opportunity.
I think, I think our timeline, if we, if we really want to do that, that community outreach with the, you know, with the video and stuff, if we shoot for April, I think we may be, the timeline may be too short. Right? Because we got to get the presentation ready, and then we got to start announcing it, so people know that it's out there, and maybe hold one or two of them. So why don't we, you think maybe a May? First meeting of May is a good time to bring it back?
Sure, are we only bringing it back for one seat?
No, everybody.
We can do it, and we can do everybody, because I mean, at the end of the day, you know, also, it's going to depend on how many applicants we get. We just want to be able to have enough time to promote this and get, get it out there and explain what the commissions are. Because if we push it to April, we may not have enough time to do that community outreach, so that we can get the, you know, the residents to attend those videos or Zooms. This way, we kind of put a date for like the first meeting of May, it'll give us these two months to, to prep for it and, and get it out there.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Uh, Shannon, uh, I, I'm assuming, uh, maybe Manny will be also pushing the social media. Does that timeline work for you to make sure that we can get this out and make sure that more residents are aware of the application opportunity?
And bring it back to the council in, in middle or late May? I think that works.
Great.
Yeah, I think that should work.
Great, I, I would support that. So if you want to make that a motion, um, Mayor Proten?
Exactly what you said, I make that a motion. To repeat everything. Yes, let's do that. Let's look at our early May timeline, that, that way gives staff, uh, time, because I know it, it will be a lot of work. It gives them time to get the videos going or the meetings going. It gives Lulu time, uh, to get all the clarification on the job requirements as well for her to post on the website. So yes, let's bring it back in May, early May.
Okay, great, that's fine. Any objections? Our second first, is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any objections? None? Good. Okay, so that's item number eight. And I believe that concludes all of our items. Uh, now we move on to staff requests and communications. Uh, I did want to request, uh, discussion and direction to staff to send out a request for qualifications for OnCall and overflow legal services. I think it's, uh, I think it's a good idea. We can have a more diverse, uh, not a bench, that's not the right word, but we can have a more diverse, uh, team of, uh, of attorneys that are specialized in different areas, so that we can better navigate, uh, city issues and be better prepared. And I think that would also, uh, add to the, to the case transparency and make sure that we're rotating on, on our, on our attorneys. But I don't know, uh, any council members have any questions or concerns? Great, so, uh, I, I believe at this point we are all in, uh, consensus that this is a good idea. So staff has that, that full okay to move on.
Thank you.
Will do.
Is there any other comments or, uh, concerns council members want to share before I adjourn?
I, I do, Mayor. Um, I would like to talk about, I've been getting a lot of texts, and then we, we had, uh, Beatrice who called in today regarding the chat on the YouTube. Uh, I believe it was open on the first meeting, from what I understand. I don't know, I didn't, I didn't look at the five o'clock one. But we need to, we need to bring this back into a discussion. I absolutely, I am in agreement with everyone else that we cannot allow for any type of vulgar or any profanity or any comments, you know, that people are posting on there. We need to try to figure out how we can monitor that. But in a way, right now, you know, yes, we're giving the people the meeting, you know, so that they can see it on YouTube. But a lot of them like to communicate through there, and, and yes, I'm not, you know, advocating for the ones who are vulgar on there, I am against that. But we should, we should make this, uh, take this a serious discussion between us and figure out how we can get this chat back on with, you know, a way that we can monitor it. Um, so that way we have a discussion on this, because there is a lot of people that are complaining about it.
Okay.
Can we put that into a discussion and, and another closed session, just so that we can discuss it?
Yes, but, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Damon, uh, we did have this conversation already in the past, and staff was going to come back uh, and create a policy for us to review and for us to discuss at, uh, not in closed session, but in, uh, public study session. Uh, for exactly those, for all the reasons, uh, you spoke to. Uh, so, yeah, so it's just a matter of when staff's ready to begin that process for us. And like I said, uh, as, as you've mentioned, and, and I've mentioned, and I know Councilmember Garcia has mentioned in the past, is, you know, who's, who's going to be monitoring it, uh, you know, who's going to be, you know, be the, uh, the, the hall monitor or the administrator for that, um, and so forth. So, you know, those are all questions that we have to answer, because should someone be offended by something that happens while, while that's on there and there's repeat offenders, uh, you know, we as a city are going to be held liable for that. And, uh, you know, I don't, I'm not looking towards any type of lawsuit, uh, or anything else of that nature, but those are the policies. And more importantly, like you mentioned, is the process of what that is. So I welcome that discussion in, uh, you know, in a, at a future study session.
Yeah, and, and, and again, that's just because, you know, we left it at that the last time, but we never really gave, you know, a timeline. So I'm just kind of reiterating, let's, let's get on it. Let's try to get staff to, you know, work on this policy, if they've been working on it or not. You know, but let's just, let's just try to get it into, into some type of discussion sooner than later, because, you know, here we are going to maybe end up in December, and then we're still going to be getting text messages and phone calls, that the chat's disabled and we haven't addressed it. So this way, we can just kind of get some type of policies and procedures put in order, so that we can bring it into a study session, and then we can decide on that. And hopefully it's sooner than later. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mayor Proten.
Oh, this is a, a different topic. It's not about the chat.
Oh, are we done with that? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. No, I, I agree, you know, they, we, they should be heard, but I do agree also that, uh, they need to, uh, not insult or use vulgar language in any way. And as a city, we need to protect everybody that works for, for the city as well as whoever's on the chat. But also as council members, I think our, our community deserves to have us live. If we were at an actual council meeting, um, there, we would have to be there, right? So I think we're on Zoom and our camera should be turned on at all, not at all times, because sometimes we have to turn it off, mine keeps going off. But, um, we should, they deserve for us to have the cameras on. This is a city council meeting. So I'm requesting that everybody's camera should be on. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
I'd like to also recommend that, uh, our treasurer, Marie Conferadas, lead us in the pledge of allegiance at our meetings, because, you know, in a, in a regular council meeting, we would see her and, and sometimes she has to tell us, like, hey, I'm here, guys, you know, um, and I think it would be nice to give her that, that space, um, just so that she can participate in our meetings. Um, I think she would, I think, I think she would actually like to do that. So that would be my recommendation.
Uh, yeah, I mean, if, if Marie's comfortable, we can always pick her. I personally, I like to pick different people, like today we had, uh, you know, former Councilmember Cruzbaca, and I thought it'd be nice to let her do the flag salute for us. Uh, every, every day I've been picking somebody different, just to make sure that, you know, we're all, we all have the opportunity to do so.
Well, yeah, of course. If somebody wants to put in a request, then absolutely, you know, if they want to put in a request to lead that, then I agree with you, then yeah, give them that time. But I think it'd be nice, you know, because Marie is our elected treasurer, and we don't really hear from her during the meetings. So, you know, that would just be my suggestion, but it's, it's entirely up to you. Uh, that was just my recommendation.
Is, is that Marie, is that something, I, you know, I don't want to force you to do it. Do you want to be our, our, oh, you're on mute, but do you want to be our, our, our flag leader? For, for the rest of, uh, for the rest of forever?
I think it's forever. But thank you, Councilmember Garcia, for thinking of me. You know, me and the mic are always scary. That's why I don't talk so much. But once I start, I'll just keep on going.
Well, the flag salute is only so long, so I'm not entirely sure how you're going to keep it going, but.
I better stop practicing the flag salute.
I, I will make sure, uh, City Clerk send you a little note, so you don't, so you don't, uh, forget it. Um, but you know, if you, of course, you know, we always love hearing, uh, you know, Marie speak. We don't hear you often. So if you'd like, we, we can give you that spotlight for a little bit, hear you out a little bit more, even if it's just a flag salute. And make sure that, you know, you're, you're a part of our council meetings.
That's okay. We can alternate.
Okay, we can alternate. I'd give you voting power, but I can't, so the flag salute is probably the best.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilman Garcia.
Okay, so I will, I will definitely keep you more in mind, uh, Marie. You know, thank you for being.
That's fine.
And I believe at this moment, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, but we are not adjourning the meeting because we are recessing back into closed session.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Great, so I will see you all. Oh, yes?
And if, if I could just add, yes, if everybody could use the original closed session Zoom meeting, that one is still active. Um, and then after that meeting, we'll have to join back into this one to report out.
Great, so I will see you all on the closed session.
Thank you.
Night, everyone. Bye. Bye, Marie.
Uh, good night.
Good night. Hi, Mark. Hi, Mark.
I've, thank you. Hey, everybody.
Hey, Mayor, we are live, so I think as soon as the attorney's back.
Oh, there it is, hey, everybody. I see Chief and, and Marie are still on.
Hey, Chief, how are you?
Hi, hello, everybody.
Hello, Chief.
Hello.
Hi, Chief.
Thanks for working for us.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have one, two, three, four, so we are all here, right, so we have quorum, so, city attorney, would you please report out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the city council considered several items in closed session. The city council also added an urgency item in closed session, because the item came up after the agenda was passed. And that item was under existing litigation. It is Dominguez, the, the city of Baldwin Park. So, that item was added at, as an urgency item in closed session. No final action was taken regarding that item, and so there's no reportable action regarding Dominguez. In addition, there was no final action taken on the other items discussed in closed session, therefore, no reportable action, and that does conclude my report.
Great, thank you for that, city attorney, at this point, I believe we are done with the city business, I will move to adjourn the meeting, can I get a second? Any objections? None, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good night.